I call this work session, meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, November 19th of the year 2024. It is 3:06. Apologies for the delay, technical difficulties. Ms. Cordova, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Rodriguez. Uh, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Carza. Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason. Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
First. Okay, thank you. The first item is citizen comment. The city council will hear citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. Persons wishing to speak during the citizen comment must sign up either online or at the city clerk's office. Speakers may speak once during the citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing on tonight's agenda, I ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You will have three minutes to speak, which starts when you state your name. A timer is displayed on the screen. You'll start in the green. When the timer shows only yellow, you'll have less than 20 seconds left. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or violence, threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel. I will ask you to leave the council chambers. And if you need to help doing so, our officer will assist you. This is your warning. It's not you get a warning and you get to keep talking. This is your warning. If something happens, that's when I will gavel you down and you need to leave. So today, we have five people signed up as Cody Hallifield here. Is this person online? Okay, I'll circle back. Allison Fortson remotely. Ms. Cordova is...
I don't see her. No, mayor, I don't see her.
Okay. Well, then, our next is Virginia Parker, who is in person and is here.
All right, y'all forgive me because my handwriting's terrible, so I'm going to be squinting on my own notes. Hello, mayor and council members. I'm Virginia Parker with the San Marcos River Foundation. I've come to you today to talk about Cape's Dam. Smurf owns the high bank at Cape's Dam, and in 10 years, we've never wavered on our stance that removal is the best thing for the San Marcos River environmentally. However, let's set aside the environment for one moment. The city has said for a year or more that they're working to hire a project manager to assess whether or not rehabilitation of Cape's Dam is even feasible. That project manager is still not in place and won't be until the ARPA money is delegated due to timing constraints. So it's fair to say that it's going to be a while before a project manager is even hired, not to mention the time it's going to take for them to assess whether or not rehabilitation of the dam is possible. So I'm here today to save us all time and the citizens of San Marcos a lot of money and to tell you, Smurf will not allow the rehabilitation or rebuilding of Cape's Dam. Unless council wants to use eminent domain, y'all could ask the county if they'd be willing to dissolve the MOU and allocate the six figures set aside for a project manager to something else like the Parks Department that we all know is underfunded. The rehabilitation is not possible without our cooperation. The high bank is where all the structural integrity is on the dam. It's a really important point. Safety is an issue with low-head dams, so even if the city wants to rehabilitate that dam, you still have a safety issue. And we all know of the unfortunate situation from a week and a half ago that we are all heartbroken about, not to mention the cost. There is currently U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service grant money available for removal. That means it would not cost the citizens anything. Removal is the fastest and cheapest way to deal with Cape's Dam. Removal would mean not having to spend money to maintain the dam in the future, like we just saw at Rio Vista. You want to talk about environmental impact, the months of de-watering at Rio Vista is a problem. That's going to have to happen every 10 years, not to mention the million dollars that the city just spent to rehabilitate Rio Vista. We don't want to see that at Cape's Dam. So we would love for y'all to talk to the county, ask them to pull out of the MOU, assuming council agrees, reallocate the funding that y'all have allocated for a project manager, and put it towards something useful like the Parks Department. And then in two weeks, vote to apply for a grant from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maxfield Baker. There he is. Mr. Baker?
I think my video on for some reason, the host has disabled it.
Mr. Baker, we can hear you.
Right, but they had disabled my video, and now there it is. Great. Uh, ooh, yeah, I'm in my kitchen making dinner, so forgive the messiness. But yes, I'm Maxfield Baker. I am here today on behalf of the San Marcos Civics Club. We have prioritized housing as one of our main issues for next year. This was based on the results of our Reasons Not to Vote rally, where the citizens of San Marcos voted housing to be the worst issue in our town. And as a result of that, I wanted to attend this meeting, for one, to listen to what looks like an amazing presentation by city staff, some facts and figures that long have been felt by members of our community finally at the forefront. I really want to give, you know, as many gold stars as I can to staff for putting this together and for council for giving the direction to make this happen. I know today you all are talking about the low-income housing tax credits as well as predatory leasing, rent-by-the-bedroom, however we want to kind of phrase it here. And again, just thumbs up all the way around for making this happen, here in our community. I do have some recommendations. I have long been a proponent that our low-income housing tax credit fills a good void in our community, and I was also a member of that subcommittee, so have a little bit more information and experience with it. But there are still aspects of our low-income housing tax policy that do equivocate to redlining members of our community out of those housing opportunities. So if we want to talk about expanding housing opportunities, we also need to consider the impact of credit score checks, the impact of whether people are required to indicate that they're felons or not, things of that nature that, again, result in not really serving our true needy members of our community, but instead, you know, kind of sleight lighting the statistics in one direction or another. Similarly, I think that the Legislative Committee, Finance and Legislative Committee, should consider lobbying our state and federal-level agencies that impact TBHCA and where we derive the median income from, as well as kind of understanding the impacts that those state and federal-level requirements have on the accessibility of this low-income housing to our residents. So again, great job all the way around. I really look forward to hearing this presentation today and asking some follow-up questions, hopefully at the end during the Q and A with press and public. I really want to, as a sidebar, not reflecting the opinions of the San Marcos Civics Club, but I do want to applaud the San Marcos River Foundation for coming forward with such a strong statement about the rebuilding of Cape's Dam and how they do not support that and that the city could potentially save lots of money by pursuing an alternative. So thank you so much, Virginia Condi and the San Marcos River Foundation, for staying strong on that issue. It is unfortunate that we had a loss of life due to the negligence of the city and on that part. So I hope that this brings some well-do hate to this issue. Thank you.
Okay, and Vanessa McMahon. I think these folks signed up for 6 o'clock and maybe just checked both boxes.
I think so.
Okay, seeing no one else appears to be coming in to speak, that will conclude the citizen comment portion of our program. Council, are y'all okay with swapping these two presentations today? Ms. Fitzpatrick has another engagement, and so y'all good with her being first? Okay, then we will start with item two.
Receive presentation and hold discussion regarding leasing practices on student housing and provide direction to city manager.
Ms. Reyes.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. This first presentation has been discussed by the Neighborhood Commission multiple times. A resolution was approved by the commission earlier this year, and city council provided guidance to come back with additional information. We have Shannon Fitzpatrick with us here today to help provide a presentation highlighting the differences between rent-by-the-bed and conventional leases. Ms. Fitzpatrick is retired from Texas State University Office of the Attorney for Students, where a much of her caseload in her office involved landlord-tenant relationships and the Texas Property Code, which governs them. I would now like to turn it over to Greg Carr, Director of Neighborhood Services, to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Carr, Director of Neighborhood Enhancement. So the purpose of tonight's presentation, as Ms. Reyes said, so we've talked about this subject several times, and Neighborhood Commission and councils talked about it. Texas State University, their legal staff and just what they do on a daily basis has the most expertise. So we've asked them to come and give us some information on it. You know, I've previewed it, and it's really good information. It explains a lot of the little things that go on. Council requested this information, so next slide. So now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, city council, for being here and allowing us to speak to you today on this very important topic. Again, I am retired from the university, but I am still a practicing attorney here in San Marcos and occasionally handle cases that they will fast-forward because nobody practices this kind of law because it's very expensive and it can, a lot of people can get injured. So it's an important topic for the quality of life for the residents of this community and those around it. So if I could hit the first slide, please. So a couple of, three objectives here. We want to look at leveling the playing field a bit between landlords and tenants, particularly in the rent-by-the-bed, student housing, however you want to describe that, is often a very unlevel playing field and very difficult for 18, 19-year-olds to navigate. And it's important to understand the two business models. You have this individual lease, student, however you want to describe it, versus what the kind of lease most of us in the room have had at some point, which, you know, an adult, sounds bad if I say adult-oriented, but you know, it's kind of what it is. It's a standard lease. So if I could hit the next slide, please. Oh, I just want to talk about this language for a minute. So we have a traditional lease versus purpose-built student housing, a traditional standard, conventional versus rent-by-the-room or a single lease. One of the challenges is there's a lot of confusion on this because the corporations who do this say, oh, we're going to change it from purpose-built student housing to rent-by-the-bed. Therefore, your ordinance doesn't apply to us and we can continue business as usual. So it's understanding the characteristics of these things rather than relying on a label. Next lease, next slide. So the two business models, you have a joint lease where several of us might be roommates. We're all liable. Say you have $1,000 a month rent and two of us are renting together. Either I pay 800, she pays 200, I pay 1,000, she pays nothing, we each pay 500. It's how we want to split it, but at the end of the day, the landlord's owed $1,000. If one of us leaves, then the other one's stuck with either finding somebody or then I'm, if she leaves, then I'm stuck with $1,000. So what is, based on the pricing, is per unit versus an individual housing contract. Each tenant has a separate lease, but still is responsible for the communal areas and damages and fines and all that sort of stuff and the behavior of your roommates, but not that individual rent. So it's per-person pricing. And that's what, you know, attracts a lot of, at least the parents on this, because they will say, ooh, that's good because I was screwed by roommate X when I was in college. They left me holding the bag. But there's a lot more to this than just that. Next slide. So on a conventional lease, when you walk in, and I'm fresh off of doing this with my son in Austin, you walk in, you pick out the unit that you're looking at. You don't like the first floor, maybe it's not quite so secure, you'd prefer a third floor and a unit on this wing because it's quieter than somewhere else. You figure that out. On a rent-by-the-bed, the landlord says, this is where you're going to stay. You have no say in it. If it's first floor, third floor, if it's right next to the garage, it's farthest away from the entrance, it's next to the gym and it's noisy, you have no say. You get the apartment that you're, that the landlord tells you you can have. And on a regular joint lease, you have, you pay for rent for living where you choose. You have that choice. But in a rent-by-the-bed or installment contract, you pay a 12-month, you pay an amount, say $10,000, $11,000 over a one-year period, and they divide it up throughout 12 months. And they don't always let you live there for the full 12 months, but that's how they divide that up. And again, it's where the landlord tells you to. Next slide. So identifying, these are some of the common things on a rent-by-the-bed structure. They will market them as student housing, although that does not mean necessarily only students live there, but that's their target market. Student luxury living is a common one. It has an installment contract, and the rooms are individually rented, and they offer random roommate matching. So those are, those are the ways you can tell these, what these apartments are. Next slide, please. So typical, you can see on a joint lease, this is a little bit small there, but where, again, you just split, two people will split that $1,000. You might each have your own bedroom, but you pay for the whole unit. An individual lease, you've got your own bedroom and usually bathroom, but not necessarily, and then you share the living room and the common spaces. Next slide. So some of the problems that we see with these things is that they will come, they start recruiting students to sign these leases generally in October. So the 18-year-old student hits campus in August. They get all of September, and then that 18-year-old says, somebody in their face says, here, sign this lease. You need to because there are no more space. You will not get, you will live on the street. And it's really hard sale tactics. They can say, make your mama proud that you're now an adult. And they're like, oh, I'm an adult, I'm going to sign this lease. The leases that you and I might have signed at this age would have been about six pages. These are 64 pages. Needless to say, no one reads that, and they know that, and they count on that. I didn't read the six-page either, but you know, at least it was consistent. These are, this is a whole new kettle of fish. And what they do is, for a traditional lease, I would walk in, say, I'm interested in a lease. They'd say, here, sign an application and pay for it, maybe $100, and then they run a background check on me and see if I'm really qualified. Do I make enough money? Have I had problems renting in the past? That sort of thing. With the individual leases, you walk in and you sign the lease. Sometimes you sign them online. They don't realize what they're doing, but it just is by virtue of you flipping from one page to the other, you're actually signing the lease. And then they do the background check. What's the problem with that? What happens is, whoops, what if you are not qualified because you don't make enough money? Well, virtually no student does. But what happens if your auntie, who said, I'll help you out with rent, but she doesn't qualify? At that point, you have breached the lease and you owe that $11,000, but you can't live there because you're in violation of their terms. The next one is an "as-is" clause. We see this on a fairly regular basis, that you're going to take, not only does the landlord tell you what apartment you're going to get, if it's completely torn up, if it's full of mold, if it's torn up, whatever it may be, you have, it doesn't have air conditioning or heat, you've accepted "as-is." Because when you sign that lease, they get to give you anything they want, and you're stuck with that because you signed that 64-page lease. Some of them, the photos I could show you of mushrooms growing out of the ceilings and all sorts of fun stuff, it doesn't matter because you signed the lease. Now, the third thing is a lack of security deposit. A lot of these places will say, ooh, sign today and you don't have to have a security deposit. Normally, it's $200, but today, you don't have to pay. Well, that sounds good, but it misses the mark on several fronts. In particular, the Texas Property Code says if you put down even a dollar for a security deposit, then certain things have to happen. The landlord has 30 days from move-out to do an assessment of your apartment and to see what is wrong and what they're going to charge you for, and then notify you of those charges. But if you don't have a security deposit, oops, now we fall into general liability sort of things, and they can wait up to four years later. So you have graduated, moved to Chicago, have a great job, still living hand-to-mouth because it's expensive in Chicago, but you have got a great start. And then you get a $1,500 bill from apartment X two years later. What do you do? Well, do you fly back to San Marcos to fight it? Probably not, because you know what's going to happen when you fly back. Do you have any photos of the damage? Probably not. Do they have to provide you any photos of the damage? Absolutely not. They don't have to do anything like that. They just say it's $1,500. They don't have to make the repairs even. All they have to do is say, you owe us $1,500 bucks. Now, not every complex does this. What happens is quite often, they, each of these complexes sell about every two to three years. It's one of the ways they make money. And they sell the complex, and it's the new owners come in and say, ooh, we need to reach back and pull out some money from the previous renters, and away you go. But it doesn't require documentation or anything else unless you want to file suit, and no one who's 22 years old and starting their new job, no one's going to do that. So the security deposit is important. Now, Greg Carr actually mentioned to me the other day something that is also really, I think, very pertinent here, cases where you get students who are really abusive, and they throw the chairs off the porch and into the pool and cause damage because there's no security deposit. So they're thinking, well, I'm not going to be charged anything. Well, of course they are, but that's, they're thinking, well, because I don't have a security deposit, they can't get me once I move out. And so requiring at least a de minimis security deposit, a $100 deposit, would be extremely helpful in these situations, but it can be less, as long as it's more than a dollar. And that's what pulls in the Texas Property Code protections. And then no disclosure of owner management company is required by the Texas Property Code. A lot of these places, you'll go in and say, well, I'm angry about this. Who's the owner? Is it asset management? Is it Greyston? Is it this or that? A lot of these places just aren't saying. It's required by the property code, but what is that 19-year-old, 20-year-old going to do about it? Are you going to take this multi-billion-dollar corporation to court? Probably not. A simple ordinance saying, you must do this lest you face whatever sanctions that city council wants, so you could have that enforcement mechanism that would help students and younger people and, you know, adults who are in lower-income communities that may be abusive, have abusive practices. So requiring the disclosure of the owner or maintenance, whether it's on the website or on the front door, wherever it may be, would be very helpful. Next slide. So roommate matching is a thing that sounds good. I don't have a roommate, I don't want to go out and beat the bushes to find one. Rent-by-the-bed properties, individual leases, student-oriented housing, however you want to read that, they tell you on their site that we will try to find you somebody who matches. But just, the word is try. They are not bound by your delineation of what you want. My favorite case was out at, I'm not going to even name the complex, there's so many of them. But a young woman said she was, I think, pre-law, and she wanted somebody who, and so she was getting criminal justice major. She wanted somebody who was quiet, no pets because she had terrible pet allergies, no smoking, all of no parties, that sort of thing. She's there focused on studying. And she walked in, they said, okay. She walked in the first day, and as she walked in the apartment, she met her roommate, a 45-year-old truck driver with a doberman who had already chewed a hole in the rug, peed on the rug and chewed a hole in the sofa, smoked like a chimney, not tobacco, and she's freaking out because she automatically owes fines the second she steps in there, and she's done nothing wrong. But that's what happens. Now, you can't, can you get out of that? Sometimes, if you pay a $350 fee to move someplace else, wherever the apartment wants to move you to, and at that point, you might get the exact same thing. You don't know, you don't control it, that's up to them. They can move you a week before finals. You and your best friends for the last seven or eight years managed to get four of you are in an apartment complex, and they're like, you know what, but this is full over on this wing. We need to fill out some more. We're going to move two of you over to another apartment. They can do that under these leases. And it is extremely disruptive if you have a student who, we had, there was a student who was killed at one of these units off of Ocarina, and the roommate came out and found his roommate's body after he heard the gunshot and the brains splattered on the wall. The landlord said, you cannot move out. We're not going to even move you to another, you're in breach of your lease if you try to move out. You can imagine the trauma that this person experienced. We've had students who've been diagnosed with cancer. You can't move out without paying us those installment contracts for a year out. So they are very rigid, it's very consistent with those across the board. And you, again, take the unit "as-is," which means no matter what shape it's in, that, and a lot of them, they can't, they have, the turnaround time is so short. Quite often, it's a mess when students move in. They try, you know, but quite often they fail at that. So you move into already messed-up apartment. Next slide. So here are some of the differences, again, about the conventional versus rent-by-the-bed. You will go in and do your application and how you split the rent every month, and then once you've been approved, then you sign the lease. But on the individual leases, you might pay $11,000 a year, again, in an installment contract, and the amount that you pay is going to be fixed pretty much no matter what. The, these are very profitable for the, you know, people who are building them. That's why they're doing it. But it's, it's just very immovable when it comes to students and helping them understand and/or lower-income folks just don't really always realize what they're getting, what they're getting into. And you don't have, so if I move in on the 15th of the month, I only, on a joint regular lease, I only pay for a half month. But on the installment contracts, I pay from August to July, I'm going to pay 12 months. And if I, but I may not be allowed to move in until August 20th, and I'm start, but I start paying on August 1st. And we won't even talk about the ones that don't open on time. You all are familiar with those. Next slide. So here we are with getting the credit check, reviewing the lease, paying the security deposit, checking with your family, can we afford this? And then away you go. Versus walking in and signing the application, again, sometimes that's even done online, and you are bound. And if they find out that me, ma, I can't make the payments, tough no-gies. They will take your student loans and pull those in. They require you to use those as collateral in some of those cases. And they don't have to, you've breached the contract. They don't, they can go ahead, you pay the $11,000 in total, and they go out and re-rent it, re-let it, and they get $11,000 from that person. So they are not mitigating their damages on these. They simply double-dip or sometimes triple-dip. They keep making money no matter what and a lot of money. So, next slide. There are some solutions here. These are not crazy. This is, you know, there are things that are really pretty easy to do. And the first is requiring your security deposit, requiring the... requiring the owners to disclose who they are and how they can be reached. And again, we're not talking about mom-and-pop operations here. We're talking about these big places, fifty beds and more. They can do this, they should be doing this under Texas law. It's just there's no mechanism to force them to do that unless the city should step in. And don't allow people to be bound by the lease until they have followed the Texas Property Code's process, which says you first apply, get approved, and then you can sign the lease. This is simply a reiteration of the property code, things that we should be doing now, but people aren't. And then eliminate the "as-is" clause, that if you get in and your apartment is not clean and in working condition, I mean reasonably clean and working condition, but the air conditioning, the heat, whatever, the electricity, the plumbing works, then, you know, then you should be given an option. Do you wanna wait it out? Do you want to, because you don't wanna move? You really like this location? That's fine. Or do you wanna be able to get out of that lease somewhere within the complex or somewhere else? You need to be able to have those because moving into a disaster pit serves no one. And our students, in particular, leave San Marcos. They graduate with a really bad taste in their mouth as to their experience here because of the things that are done to them as tenants in a lot of these units. I think that's my last slide? Is it next one? No, oh, yes, forgot about this. It would help if we had some, a little bit more funding to code compliance so that they can investigate and make recommendations on fines for non-compliant apartments, implement an enforcement mechanism across the board and have people just for health and safety issues who can go out. They don't, there is some of this available now. We don't know about it, that it's gotta be, if the city had a website to where the university could say, "Hey, check out the student on this housing site. Go there to see, are there a lot of complaints about this apartment complex? Are there, how do you lodge complaint with the city?" And that would help them as a single point. It's not commercially operated. It's just the city saying, "We wanna hear from you so that we can help." Because you can't fix what you don't know about and a lot of students have no idea that there's even something like code enforcement that exists at all right now. So I think that would be one of the most helpful things. That should be the last slide. Yes, very good. Can I take any questions?
You've told me some stuff today that I hadn't heard before.
Oh, I have so many stories.
I just, I didn't realize that they could just move them at any time unwillingly.
Right.
How often do they do that?
How do they do that?
How often?
How often? I couldn't give you a number on that. We, at the attorney-for-students office, we used to encounter that on a fairly regular basis. It's not frequent, but often enough, if two roommates are arguing over something, they'll say, "Okay, you have to go." Like, I wasn't the one who left the rotting dog carcass in the kitchen floor. But they're like, "Well, but you were the one who complained." So boom, you, so you have to pack up all your stuff and move. That's, it is a consistent thing. That just keeps them from having to listening to the gripes. But it does happen in almost all those units.
So if there's an issue, let's say bedbugs are just marching through the building and I report it, are they gonna blame me?
Yes. Probably about seven out of ten times. A few of them won't. But we've had that, I've seen that before, where there's cockroaches that come through, particularly the older ones. And occasionally rats, we don't see much with rodents. It's mostly the roaches and things of that nature, ants. And they file a complaint because they're, the person in the unit behind them has a pigsty and so the critters are coming in. They will make your life very difficult if you're the one who complains and potentially gives them bad press.
And am I likely to be charged to exterminate the whole complex?
That is a possibility. We have seen that. At least your, everything in your building.
I meant my small complex, but the contiguous.
Correct.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Can, can we legally stop them from forcing people to move?
Now, and that wasn't one of my solutions up here.
Yeah.
You know, I'd have to research that probably, probably. And how you do that would be, and again, I won't wanna flesh this out a little better, but you say you give people, require that you give your tenants notice of three months or something to where they at least have a lot of time or have knowledge that this could happen. Very few people realize. So it's just a matter of saying, you know, if you need to do that, you need to give some notice. And you, you could probably do that.
I love all the suggestions. As a matter of fact, when I first was on city council is when rent-by-the-bed room had actually come into play. It was, to me, it was almost like an experiment to see if it was gonna work, not realizing until now, all the complaints, that, you know, how it's really run. So thank you for bringing that forward because I like all your suggestions. But I definitely liked the one about if we can make it where, you know, they can't move them out. You know, find some way we can render that into the changes.
Thank you. Yeah, a mitigation of damages, I think, is, that's, it's in the Texas Property Code that apartments are required to mitigate their damages. These don't because they call it, it's not really rent. It's an installment contract, so we don't have to mitigate our damages. So we could have a series of three people. We've made thirty-three-thousand dollars off of one bedroom this year. So you can see, it's quite lucrative.
Yeah, we need to change that.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
Um, so Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong. You said, so according to the property code, it just, it could be something as simple as a dollar and you're awarded as a tenant, all those protections that come with that deposit?
Correct.
So are we allowed as a city to, to actually set? I know one of the solutions is to require a minimal security deposit. Obviously, we want people to have protections, but do, do we have the power to make sure that it's an affordable amount? You know, sometimes I remember paying upwards of like three, four-hundred dollars for a security deposit. And most of the time, you will never get most of that money back, even if you go through the quick cleaning process and those things. So do we have that? Do you know if we have that ability to set that amount if we were to go through the ordinance process?
I'm gonna defer to the city attorney who gets paid the big bucks for that.
Okay.
And, and tell me how you wanna set the amounts? An upper limit?
I mean, really trying to figure, I know that's a conversation probably for another day to figure out what would be affordable for people. But I just wanna make sure that, yes, we, if, if requiring the deposit is going to allow the tenant to benefit from everything else that we're talking about right now, just making sure that if we have the ability to set that amount in the ordinance, that it's not anything excessive.
So.
Because if we just require it, they're gonna make it a thousand bucks or whatever.
Exactly. And I wanna, I wanna limit their discretion on that end and see if we have the ability to set that beforehand.
Right, I think if you, really, the question is if we can do it at all for the, even the one dollar, then, that seems to me, then we would have the ability to set that amount as well. So I guess going into this whole thing right now, there needs to be an understanding with council that we are in, to some degree, uncharted territory. We have the residential tenancies code, which is extremely comprehensive. And then we have the super-preemption bill, as some people call it, the recent, yeah, the legislative session that, where they're basically saying that anything that's comprehensively, you know, regulated by the state will generally preempt local regulation. Well, one of the things we talked about the other day, we did meet and we talked about, well, what are some, some of the items that we think will keep us out of trouble with the preemption and whatnot? Are some of the items that are brought to you on these slides? But with that said, there is, it's uncharted territory. And so what I appreciate is that you've looked at items that you think are at least somewhat addressed in the property code that we can link to, to justify some of the local regulation. So, you know, we're not going all out on this, you totally taking over how, you know, how leases are regulated. But it, it is uncharted territory. So we're trying to stay within areas we think would be safe. And that's one of them, you know, the deposit.
Sure.
But again, it's, it's untested. Most cities are not dealing with the same types of, well, a lot of cities are dealing with these issues, but the difference is in a city like San Marcos, it's that the college population relative to our overall, overall population, it's huge. So it has a greater impact in a city like San Marcos than many other cities in Texas. And so that's where I think we're gonna be pioneers in some of this area because, yeah, Austin has, of course, they have a major university, but they're, the impact of these practices on the overall community, it's, it's, it's minimal compared to the impact here in San Marcos. So that's the best I can tell you right now is it's somewhat uncharted territory. But we think that some of the issues that are addressed here are this, kind of the safe areas to start with.
Okay. And then my last question was, because I know the mayor and I, we recently attended the forum and we had a lot of students come up to us and, and share these horror stories, share about the mold growing in their homes and having no process or no knowledge of what process to go about, to share the grievance. So just because of my ignorance, and this may be a question for Greg. What is the current process for students outside of the legal process?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. It's, as any resident would have. We don't have like one or two specific code officers. It's where it's for district or zone they're in. But although the lease might say, "We can put you in there," if they call us, we have a bunch of health and safety items that we do address on a constant basis. Just on a funny side note, though, we do tell them they have to clean their own bathtubs and showers because they're not, you know, "I got a mold problem." No, you gotta, you're not cleaning problem. But if there's mold, AC broken, door locks broken, then we can address it. One of the problems we have is since they don't require, and that's where she got the comment from, since they don't require the deposit, they don't think they're on the hook for anything. And when you have eighty percent of a complex cause damage and you have like a two-week turn period, they're not able to fix everything in time. So if they came to us, we would know about it. We'd get their plan and see what they were gonna do. So, yes, somebody might live in an apartment that has some ripped-up carpet or a broken cabinet until they can get to it. But there's an end date where it's gonna get fixed. Did that answer your question?
It does. I just, I was curious to see if we had like a, an ombudsman, per se, that really that's their primary role. Because I know one of the solutions that Shannon mentioned was more dedicated funds so that, you know, y'all are better suited to be able to handle, imagine, just the large income of, of complaints. So, yeah, it answers my question. I think my last question, though, is more so, it might be for the city attorney again. Can we require as part of the certificate of occupancy, whether or not the apartments? Let me figure out. So can we require that when code compliance goes and the Austin tenants council work together, can we require that the information around like mailboxes and payment locations is actually available for the tenants? So like, if I'm going and I, maybe they only take cashier's check. What, there is no, sometimes there's no clear process as far as how payments are to be made. If I have a payment late, what's that process? And I wanted to see, is that one of the suggestions? Has that come up as a complaint? And is that something that we can address?
I haven't, I haven't heard that specific issue raised, but you're really talking about a disclosure?
More so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I will say this. I think one of the safest areas for the city to venture into is disclosures. Because it, in fact, we have one ordinance on the books that specifically about disclosing certain details regarding your lease to the tenants and whatnot. So, yeah, I, I think that would be an area we could probably explore.
I have a question that piggybacks off that, Mayor. Can we require the information of the resources to be posted?
You mean like ATC?
It could.
Yeah. Like the, like the, like the, our, our contract with Austin tenants council.
Oh, like, can you provide, require a landlord to provide some sort of like, say, an information sheet or something on their website?
And I know that there's this myth that they like, give them in the packet when students first sign up. I feel like a lot of folks have drank that Kool-Aid, but I've gone with a lot of neighbors that come from South Texas and the information that is given to tenants from these massive apartment complexes is minimal. But, yeah, kinda like, you know, you walk into convenience stores and you have all those notices that is like, "By law, this is required to be posted. Tobacco is wacko." But like, hey, just FYI, if there's comments, questions, concerns, brain desires regarding your rights as tenants, check out this.
So I'm gonna give, and it's gonna sound like a lawyer answer, but it's gonna be the same answer is that it's uncharted territory. But I think disclosures, if I was gonna bet on the safer areas to begin with, it is gonna be in the area of disclosures versus, you know, outright changing, you know, lease terms and whatnot. So I, I'd say that's one of the safer paths we can explore is disclosures. But again, it's all uncharted. We're gonna be somewhat pioneering in this regard if, if the city moves forward with some of these regulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me, is it on this disclosure?
Yes.
Turn your microphone.
I've been thinking since we had this, having this conversation, what are the consequences if the landlord does not fix the problems with an acceptable limit, whatever they, they said they were gonna fix it? And let's say we got three people that live in the apartment. How do we, how do we handle something like that?
Okay, so, and I think we have a greater expert.
Are we talking about like a broken sink or a toilet or something else?
Well, let's talk about mildew since that got brought up, yeah.
Okay, just before, if I could, a couple of issues. One is we have code violations. And if it's health and safety and it violates the health and safety code, we have a means for enforcing those with fines and injunctions. And in fact, we've done that before with some apartment complexes where we've had to go into actions in a municipal court between, but that's as to the city and the health code violations or safety violations and it's fine-oriented. It doesn't impact the tenants in a direct way in terms of our ability to provide remedies for tenants. So that's the distinction there. It, it helps us clear it up. We can issue fines. But as between the tenant and the landlord, right now, the residential tenancies code, the property code basically spells out the remedies that are available for tenants when certain things happen. They're supposed to provide, for example, notify the landlord. Landlord has a certain amount of time to make certain repairs. If that isn't done, there, there may be options for the tenant to pay a lower rental amount to offset any costs they've incurred. And if, if the situation's not remedied, the tenant may have a right to move out. But all of that is spelled out in the statute currently. And, and also, those remedies are often remedies that end up pitting a tenant who has no resources against the landlord with a lot of resources. So in theory, the tenant has the ability, for example, to go to small claims court or they wanna seek a, you know, a termination of their lease. But most tenants don't have the legal resources to really fight that, right? So that's where difficulties arise. But right now, it's, it's all spelled out in the state statute, what your remedies are as a tenant. So two different things. Things we can enforce, health and safety, just with, you know, fines and injunction. And then a separate set of remedies for the tenant under state law, which we are not involved in currently.
Okay.
And you're welcome to supplement that.
We were on disclosure and I've, I've got my little chart, like I always do, with the items and over here. So for the second one, previous slide, required to disclose and post. So for the second one, previous slide, required to disclose and post owner and management contact information at all times, is that something that we are comfortable, I can't see anybody, they shouldn't complain about that. And so you, we're all good with that, okay.
May I add something on to that specific item, though, or that topic? In addition to requiring those things, I understand that Shannon, you mentioned that the ownership typically changes every two to three years, but in the case that a grievance is filed, it makes it through the process and it stands, and the apartment is found to be liable. Are residents made aware? Are residents made aware prior to signing leases, is there currently a process where if the apartment is still managed by a company and there have been numerous complaints, are residents made aware prior to make sure they're not going into something predatory?
No, at the current time, we do not have that.
Okay. Is that something, uncharted territory, I know, but is that something that, you know, we could also look into to see if it's plausible? Just to make sure that people can make that informed decision prior to signing a lease, like Shannon mentioned, it's already such a predatory process. And I feel like I would want to know if somebody's not doing business correctly, if I'm going to then go and give them additional money and also stay in their place. So I don't know if that's plausible.
Well, and it's kind of like a bad actor's list, so that you have a list of people, don't go and rent an apartment here, because all these people have had terrible experiences. Well, they put a nice fresh coat of paint, if you don't tell them, and it looks all great, and then once you're in, it's too late. So that would be something that we may be able to do.
I mean, because in theory, it saves us money, time, it saves y'all time from going out there and dealing with complaints, in the case there are bad actors, and saves the city money from sending things out there. So if that is something that is plausible, and perhaps I could also discourage them to act in the ways that they do.
So you're talking about, like, some cities publish the restaurant list and grades for what the restaurants get?
Okay, yep.
So you're talking about posting something like that for, regarding apartment complexes?
That way residents could make those informed decisions.
Kind of like Santa's naughty list.
Mm-hmm. Or like Rate My Professor.
Yep.
You know? At least I know what I'm going into if I pick this, and, you know, it makes it a little bit harder for me to complain at the end, because I knew what I was going in through.
So what it's called now, so the university has a program, it's College Rent Pad, it used to be called something different, but you have to be in good standing and stuff to be a member of that, which gives you extra access to the students and a lot of other things.
Was that used to be ACT, Achieving Communities Together, that joke?
ACT, yes.
Oh, that's funny.
And so, it's works, so they do, we've, and my department is one that works with the university, and they've taken a more active role, and in fact, they're working right now, before somebody comes in, they'll call us and go, you guys have problems with these guys, and we'll tell them, yes, no, and they may push them off until we say we're happy with them, that they've been behaving. Up until this point, they hadn't really had a process to, I'm in the door, and now I'm going to misbehave. And so they're coming up with that now on how to push somebody out. So that's kind of like this, but it's not a public facing where A, B, C, or however you want to, red, green, you know, say, and it's up to them if they want to still rent in a place that has bad recommendations or ratings to go there.
So, is that something that we can do? Isn't all that information open recordable anyway?
Yes, it is open records, and people can call us, but it is kind of a hassle where you have.
No, I'm not suggesting we do that, my point is, it's public information.
It's all public information.
So why not post it?
Correct.
I didn't, I just meant it's open.
And that's what, it's kind of unfair for somebody, if they were to go, hey, how about this apartment? We're supposed to stay neutral, but they can probably read our face, but the proper answer would be, you need to do an open records request, and we can get you everything. We don't want them going through that.
Forget I said open records, my point is, it's public information, so why couldn't we post it on the website?
Correct.
Like, city, do we do that about restaurant?
No.
Ratings, okay. But what would be the repository? What would be the repository? Would it just be complaints provided to Austin Tenant Council or Legal Rio Grande?
No, it would probably be complaints to either us or the building department, depending on what it is, and then we would have to come up with some metric on, just because it's a complaint, doesn't mean it's valid. So there has to be something that, you know, a valid complaint, certain level or something.
A verified complaint of some sort.
Because a lot of times, hey, I got this problem, we tell, and it's fixed.
Right.
That is a good complex, they may have a thousand complaints, but if they're fixing things right away, that's good. And then you have some that have two problems, and it's been years that you're.
Well, and we would have to keep up and put in parentheses the previous name, so that the, there's one apartment complex in San Marcos, I think they've had probably a dozen names in my lifetime.
We'd have to attach the address to it.
Put up the coat of paint, maybe some new carpet, and change the name and keep going. Okay, so that's something certainly that's within our purview that we can do, the complaint and the, I'll say, resolution, which might be them, might be us, but that's for physical stuff, right?
Correct.
So that's for physical stuff, that's good to know, if management is not taking care of things when it's brought to attention. On those complaints, we would not list the person who filed the complaint, would we?
No.
Okay, just making that clear, that we don't want. So, anything else on that? Because I'm going to go around the table and see if we're all doing this, if we've got our definition kind of out there, are you good?
No, I didn't have anything on that specific bullet, I know you were talking about the disclosure part. My thing was more so, I really appreciated the, I learned so much from Shannon, so I appreciate you taking the time. I think one of the things that was also mentioned, though, while we've been talking, is small claims courts, and that some people do take that process, and so maybe perhaps we bring in the JPs to maybe talk about some of the things that they've seen, some of the horror stories, and maybe how those things were resolved to, to better understand.
Let me go around the table on us, put it on the website first, though?
Okay.
And just close that one out, are y'all good with posting complaints? And for right now, we're talking about the rent by the bedroom, but there are others that are not necessarily rent by the bedroom, there are rent houses that are rented out by individuals. Do we want to include all of those?
I don't see why not.
I, for me, it seems like it wouldn't be fair.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, if you'll remember, I've been before you, I think three times now, talking about a proactive rental inspection program.
Yep.
And this would be appropriate, because it is, it's not just purpose-built student housing, it could be anybody. And I wanted to, I was itching to say this earlier, when it's about the disclosure stuff, that could be part of that process, where we have what they have to disclose, the owner, whatever it is, that personally, I would like to see what the legal process to go to the JP is. It's not just a post-it note on the door saying, three days and you're out, no, this is the process, because that's one of the things that we find out about after they've moved out. I got this, you know, posted, and I moved out, and it's like, it's too late now, you shouldn't have done that. So that's one of those things, I think disclosure on a lot of items would be appropriate.
Yes, I agree. Okay, so we're all good with the website? And at this point, I'm just going to ask, are we interested in looking into this, knowing that it may come back that we're not legally able to do that? But I'm going to go through the list of requiring at least a minimal security deposit amount to be determined at later date, we're all interested in that? Okay, so that's a yes. The next one was, do not allow applicants to be bound by the lease until they and the guarantor is qualified, that still just blows my mind. But it is a way they can keep renting that same apartment over and over again and put money in their pocket. Is this something, Mr. Gary, that we can address? I want to, I'm just, I'm just looking for legalities here. Is that something we should pursue?
I think the best thing to tell you is, I think we should, you should allow us to research it as a possibility, but it's tricky, you know, Texas is very strict, parties are bound by the contract, and they know their rights and all that, and the sanctity of contracting as, as recognized by the property code. So I think we should explore it.
And I'm looking at time now, so I'm going to try to move, I don't want to stop anybody from speaking, but we do have another thing, we have two more things to do. So if we just know that we do want this one, to see if there's something we can do, research it? Okay, I got yeses on all that. Regarding the as-is clause, that one still just blows my mind, too. But I do hear complaints from students, I moved in, and the descriptions of some of those things, especially in the bathroom, was like really disgusting. Mr. Gary, is that just something that we'll just say, yes, we want researched, and then y'all can come back?
I think the best thing to do is have council tell us all the things they're interested in, and we'll, we'll research ways to kind of get there if possible.
So there's nothing on the list that you're saying, forget it, never going to happen, we don't even want to talk about it? They're all worthy of some?
Yeah, I think, I think they're all potentially to be researched, I wouldn't want to rule out any one of your preferences.
Okay, the as-is, we all good, okay, got that one. And the next one is actually on us, and that suggestion was to make sure that code compliance has the funding the people, et cetera, needed to investigate and find those that are, at least for the things that you do now, with the physical, what I call the physical stuff. So, Mr. Mendoza?
My mic to work here. Yes, ma'am, again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, I've been pushing for this for the past two years, we need more funds to go to code compliance so they can actually do a great job. So I'm a thousand percent on board, just before you even asked the questions, I'm okay with everything there.
Yeah, I think that's the next question I'm going to have. But in this particular case where this takes dollars, that's something that, since we've said, oh, yes, on that one, okay, that's something that we put Ms. Reyes's court, that this probably needs to come up at vision, and certainly at budget policy time, which is January and February for us. So are y'all good with the others, implement enforcement mechanism? I think this next one, hire a dedicated code enforcement officer, goes with the other, to see what we can do through code. Are we all good with those? I'm thinking so, yes, okay. The next one is create mechanism for tenant to lodge complaints. I can see that as being something good, because if you're complaining, and you're eighteen and a half, and you don't know where to go, maybe the right place is code compliance, maybe it's something that Austin Tenant Council can do, maybe it's something else, but we need one place for them to go to even know where the next step is. I think knowing what that first step is, is, I'm not sure I know now necessarily if I weren't in this conversation, and I certainly didn't know at eighteen and a half. So that's something that we, that we have the power to do, is to at least get that decision tree as to where they can go for help. So are we all good with that? Because that's within our power to.
Yeah, on that, I would just make sure that we make it, you know, multilingual.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, as accessible as possible.
Yeah, yeah, anything we do like this, we've been pretty good at getting the, didn't say perfect, so that's, that's the city.
Well, that complaint was one of the things that caught my attention, as far as them being forced to move to different locations, so I'd like to find a way that, you know, we can remedy that if possible.
I've got, that's on the list, I'm going to get there, these are the ones that I added to the list. Just FYI, the Austin Tenant Council is at, they've got people, you can file an inquiry at any time, I did know the website address, you can do that at any time, but on generally the third Monday at the library, from maybe four to six, is when the folks are here, and also on campus every, I think it's Thursday from ten to two or something, the, I believe it's the same person, is on campus in front of the Student Center in the mall area with brochure, she's actually actively asking people, you know, do you have any landlord issues, et cetera, and to see where she can direct them and how the ATC can help.
That's good to hear. How, what does the marketing process on that look like on our end, to make sure that, you know, people know that that's going on?
That's the next question, and that will tie into that creating the mechanism for tenants to lodge complaints, is we need to have something on our site, and I believe, Ms. Reyes, it's been highlighted and renamed and some other things, because that was one of the things that I learned building the first website for Technology Resources by the Department of the University, is you don't do it by department, because that means you have to know which department does it. We would go through, what is it that people need to know, and you start out there, and then you say, this is a department that you need to go to.
Right, I will say, the website didn't have a lot of information up until very recently, like it didn't outline specifically, these are the, like extended services, you know, like we changed a lot, so the vibe in the community has always been kind of like, like it's a joke, like the contract with Austin Tenants Council, like we're paying them fifty cents, like we can't expect them to solve our issues, so nobody calls. But Ms. Reyes, I think the day of, when I took a screenshot of the website, they updated it, they put like, help with, I think eviction, or da, 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 so.
It's tenant, tenant resources?
Tenant rights now are tied resources.
And then it has by the Rio Grande, it has all the language as far as everything that we do.
And other resources in the bottom.
And all the other resources for financial assistance or any other resources.
But the day we looked at it, it still said Austin Tenant Council, and I said, if I'm worried about eviction, I'm not sure that I'm looking at Austin Tenant Council, so it needs to not be titled with the name of the service, it's what people are looking for. Again, it's not what we're pushing, what is the reader's frame of mind and how you approach that. So we're getting better.
Yeah.
We're getting better.
And then, just one more comment on that. So she is the same person that's talking with people, she's coming down at a different time and flyering, so she'll go to different complexes at our suggestion, and then flyer the whole thing to get information. The beginning, we had to kind of watch space was available at the library, and it's very busy and popular, so Tiffany's out there today or yesterday tying down for the whole year, so that we can say, third Monday, from this time to this time, and so, because that's, that consistency is very important for people to understand.
At the homeless coalition meeting, Diane said she'd work with us to.
Yes.
Get that done.
When it's already booked, it's booked, so now that we're getting ahead of the game now.
Yep.
Sorry, I was listening to it in my car earlier, it echoed.
Okay, so, I think we've got most of these, we've got those done, of course, we're all interested in all of them, which I knew we would be, or at least I was hoping we would be. The only ones, the only thing that I've got left, and that is basically moving people, either not moving them, or moving them when they don't want to be moved. So I have put that on the list, I don't know where our ability to have influence over that is, but are we all interested in that one also? I felt sure we would be. Okay, yes, ma'am, Amanda, I'm sorry, Ms. Rodriguez?
Uh, no.
Just by moving people, we're talking about when things just go awry and finding new?
Well, like the criminal justice major that wanted out, and the allergies with the dog and all that, or the fact that sometimes you kind of have a, you know, happy little family there, and then they come in and split you up and tell somebody you have to move. Either way, when they won't, when you want to, or they do, when you don't want to, either way, it's just moving people. Okay.
That knows is going to be the key thing on that.
Well, yes, but just because they give you a week's notice or whatever, to me, that's still, especially if it happens right before finals, or something like that, that it's very disruptive. I just want to throw out here, so it stays on the list, is several years ago, we did pass an ordinance requiring anybody who rents, this can be houses, this can be apartment complexes, that if you are in a flood-prone area, you have to tell the people who are renting. And that came from experience in the 2015 flood, is a woman and her husband, retired pastor, moved into Blanco Gardens like three months before the flood happened, and she says, I had no idea, you know, didn't know that the river was that close, didn't know that. And she says, I had no idea, you know, didn't know that the river was that close, didn't know that it was even in the realm of possibility. So we did that. How often do we remind folks that that's a requirement?
That's a good question.
Not near enough.
Yeah, not near enough to people who moved into an apartment I lived in, in Blanco Gardens, had no idea.
Mayor, didn't we also ask for evacuation route?
Yes, and notation, and actually now that thirty-five has been changed and that frontage road is not, you don't have the under whatever they had, and depending on which apartment complex it is, probably oughta change, because that's gonna be different. You're right, thank you for remembering that. And also the flood, giving them information on war in central Texas, all the safety stuff. So we need to make sure, I just wanna add that, I mean, if we're gonna be out there talking to them, telling them this is what you need to do, we need to remember what we've already got, a requirement. Counsel, what else do we have? Have I missed anything? So, the original decision points were?
Go to the last slide, please.
Yes, I think we've answered those.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you've answered them, we don't even have to go here.
Or, or whatever, whatever we can do, and it may be that we can't do this, but we might be able to do that. Like if we can't require something, do the notice. Whatever other, whatever we can possibly do that's within our purview and our ability, I think we want to see that. Even if the big legal one is no.
Getting to the interest, the other part, I just wanna make sure and clarify. I know Greg talked, Mr. Carr talked about rental inspections program. So is that something that council would also like to pursue as we go through?
We said that a year and a half ago.
I've already got that commitment.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I got the green light.
I know he talked about it and I know he said that we could incorporate, but I just wanted to make sure y'all were good with that.
Yeah, and then this would all, all work together.
That one's on me getting the time and resources and information I need to implement.
I have one more ask. If you could send us the information about the new ACT program, whatever it's called now, and like to what capacity the university or the city's involved in it, that's something I'm curious about.
Okay.
Yeah, ACT was our program.
Oh, was it? That, that was terrible, y'all.
And then reach out to the university.
Mayor, I have one more thing.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Shannon, again, I know I said thank you, but thank you, seriously. Is there anything considering, you know, there seems to be a consensus of the body to move forward in, in a way that aligns with your solutions? Are there any other dream items that you had that we may have missed or didn't spend time on?
I think for now, I, the, the most prudent path for the council is to get these in, get them submitted. Once you see the effectiveness of this and, you know, you understand the, all the legal ramifications and that that's lining up nicely, I think that will be your stepping stone to say, okay, we've done this. Now we can approach these two or three next items on the list. Whether expanding it, I like the concept of hitting it across the board for some of these things. Knowing who your landlord, it's not just the management company, but it's not just Simon Legree Properties, but it's, it's Fred Smith who owns it. Taking that across the board, those sort of things where we hit, we have a lot of low-income people in this town who need to be helped. And I think you've got a very good first step and we can continue working on that once these are in place.
Yeah, I think disclosing who's got issues and doesn't take good care of their tenants, we may not be able to require them to do anything, but we can put some sunshine on it.
That's right, it's a free market, you know, at the end of the day, if, if bad news gets out about you, that's on you.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
All right, um, so, everybody good? Okay, then we will now, thank you so much, Ms. Fitzpatrick. It's good to hear from the expert.
Yes, thank you.
I would just like to thank her again for the information. It was eye-opening in some cases. And the solutions they brought when we first saw that are all attainable. They weren't stuff that made us shake it off. And then I also wanna thank Amanda for giving us this slot first.
Yes.
Thank y'all.
Bye-bye, thanks. And speaking of, we will go with item one.
Receive a presentation, hold discussion on request data related to low-income housing tax credit, LIHTC projects, and provide direction to staff.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. This work session was requested during a July council meeting discussion related to our affordable workforce housing policy. City council shared concerns about the number of low-income housing tax credit developments that were seeking a tax exemption. We're providing data today that is related to property and sales tax revenue, as well as data on the LIGHTC existing developments. Staff is seeking direction on a number of topics, including workforce housing committee, city requirements compared to the state, payment in lieu of taxes, and the strategic housing action plan update. We have quite a bit of information to cover. We know this is an important topic, so I'm gonna turn it over to Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor and Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. The first thing I want to do is acknowledge those who are not in the room. I am here representing months of data gathering from finance, economic development, diversity, equity, inclusion, legal, GIS, planning. Everybody was at the table for this, so we're, I'm really excited to be giving this presentation on our behalf. It's really long, so we're gonna just go ahead and jump into it on the next slide. I'm going to be using a lot of acronyms during this presentation, so I wanted to provide those right at the front. The very first, I will say LIGHTC. You may hear in the community, LI-Tech. I don't know that there's one right way to say it, but in San Marcos, we say LIGHTC. And that is the actual developments, the, the housing developments that we see going up on the ground. TDHCA is the state department that the developments apply to, to receive the tax credits. RONOs, the resolution of no objection. It is part of the application that the applicants provide to TDHCA and it is approved by city council. We're not approving the request or their development specifically. We are just saying that we don't object to them applying to the state. The LURA, the land use restriction agreement, is between the developer and TDHCA and includes all of the services that are provided by the development on-site. AMI is area median income, which is established by our metropolitan statistical area. And we are in the Austin MSA, so we will notice that our area median income may seem high for our community and that's because we are lumped in with all of Austin and the surrounding communities of Austin. Pilot is payment in lieu of taxes for those projects who are partnering with an entity like the Housing Authority and will not be on the tax rolls. They sometimes offer a payment in lieu of those taxes that they would have paid over the years. So with that, you will also hear me say that we made some assumptions or tried to draw some conclusions throughout the presentation. And as we get to that data, I will mention those as we go along. Next slide. We're gonna start with our affordable and workforce housing policy history. Next slide. The city first adopted the policy in 2014. It was very basic and did not include any language for the low-income housing tax credit projects. City council asked us to focus on the LIGHTC projects and developments, so we're not going to focus on the other aspects of the policy. But it's been a while since we've looked at the other aspects of the policy, so at some point, I'm going to be recommending that we come back and look at that policy as a whole. But in 2017, the policy was amended to include LIGHTC projects for only senior housing. We said at that time, we only want to approve RONOs for senior housing. And then in 2018, we said, actually, we need LIGHTC developments for more of our community. We need more of this lower-income housing. Between 2018 and 2023, we've had a variety of amendments, just minor modifications, adding criteria throughout the years. And I just wanted to note that while we were working on some modifications to that policy, we were actually also working on our strategic housing action plan. We pulled data in 2018, 2019. We had consultant staff and a workforce housing tax task force that prepared a housing study as well as a strategic housing action plan. That plan was placed on hold a few years ago until after the comprehensive plan was adopted. Guess what? We adopted the comprehensive plan. We are super excited about that. So this will be one of the next steps that we kick off, is updating that data. We know that it's at least five years old, in some cases, six years old, and our community has changed in that time. So we know it's very important to figure out where we stand today, update that plan so we can get it before city council for adoption and start implementing some of those strategies. And then July of this year, city council requested a presentation of data as it relates to LIGHTC developments and that is why we're here today. Next slide. As the staff group was compiling the data requested by city council, we started to talk generally about key factors that we wanted to share with you, and these are going to be city-wide factors. First is that our population continues to grow. We've seen it over the years. And our comprehensive plan is expecting that we will need fifty thousand housing units and jobs in the next twenty-five years to be able to accommodate those that are coming here. Next slide. As we grow in population, we also grow physically. This is just a quick snapshot of the annexations that we have processed in the last five or so years. We've seen a lot of these annexations along I-35 and on the east side of San Marcos, which is actually what we were anticipating in our 2013 comprehensive plan. So our growth is trending towards what we anticipated it would with the comprehensive plan. Next slide. Switching gears to economic factors, there are some interesting, there's some interesting information in the numbers that we pulled from the US Census Bureau. First, San Marcos's employment rate, or the percentage of working people, working age people, which is sixteen and over. I'm gonna reverse and start that sentence over, because I wasn't going to make any sense. The percentage of working age people who have jobs is sixty-five percent. Sixty-five percent of our working age population is working. That is higher than the state's sixty-two percent. And this factor actually indicates that the city has a good or expanding economy. People are working, they have jobs. But alternatively, we see in the other part of the slide that our poverty rate is twenty-one point one percent. So what we deduce from that is that our workers are likely underemployed and may not be making enough money to cover their basic necessities. So they're working and that's great, but maybe the jobs aren't accommodating their needs. Next slide. This is a really great graphic from the Census Bureau as well, that it maps where jobs are concentrated in San Marcos. Of course, we have downtown, the university area is that really dark purple color, and then along I-35, as we would expect. This information is important as we get later in the presentation, when we start to talk about the location of our LIGHTC developments and our housing that's coming into San Marcos. They're not really relative to each other. Our housing appears to be moving out away from where jobs are located. Next slide. Another great Census Bureau graphic shows us how many people drive into town or leave San Marcos to go to work. It shows us that only about ten percent of people live and work in San Marcos. This could indicate there are not enough or desirable housing options for those working here or that there are not enough or desirable jobs for people who are living here. We may also derive from this graphic that we could be losing sales tax, because people may be shopping in other communities as they're driving to and from work. And that was one of the discussion points at city council, was sales tax. Unfortunately, we can't be certain about any of these things. They're just thoughts and ideas and just, that were discussed by our internal work group. But these are kind of some of the things that we deduced and assumed as we were going through all of this data. Next slide. Talking more specifically about sales taxes, what we do know is that our population continues to grow. We also know that our sales tax continues to grow. Of course, we've seen some downward trends in sales taxes, but over the last five or so years, we have continued to see an uptick in both. Next slide. Next, we started to analyze land area, citywide, of tax-exempt properties. We found that thirty percent of all land in San Marcos has a partial tax exemption. That's homestead exemptions, ag exemptions, things like that. And if we can do one quick click on the slide, we have twenty-eight percent of land in the city of San Marcos that is fully exempt. So it is owned by the city, the ISD, the university, the housing authority, those entities that are making our LIGHTC projects tax-exempt. Twenty-eight percent of the city is fully tax-exempt. Next slide. And give it one more little click. This is the twenty-eight percent. And of the twenty-eight percent, actually less than one percent of tax-exempt land are LIGHTC developments. Next slide. Now we're going to talk in more detail about LIGHTC developments. Next slide. These slides are included in the presentation, impossible to read from the dais, but you have them in your packet. We wanted to list all of those properties which are tax-exempt. Those with the little star denote that they have a pilot with the city, either they're paying year over year or they have made a lump sum payment to the city. Next slide. This slide shows those that are not tax-exempt. And we'll click over to the next slide. We were responding to a council question about when certain developments were approved. So we went ahead and broke out those exempt versus non-exempt properties. We have approved quite a few non-exempt properties over the last four or five years. And we've actually approved more not exempt. I hope I didn't say that backwards. We have approved five exempt and eight that are not exempt. We have a total of twenty-three LIGHTC developments in San Marcos. Eleven of those have no tax exemption, ten have one hundred percent exemption, and two are taking advantage of a fifty percent exemption that's available. We provided the number of units on the previous slides if we needed to go back and speak to that. But the reason that we provided that information is that we are able to estimate population for those developments. And at full build-out, we deduce that LIGHTC, the residents in LIGHTC developments will make up about ten percent of our community at a point in time when they're done, which will be in about two years. Next slide. City council requested data on how much tax revenue is and is not realized due to our LIGHTC developments. And this slide indicates we do not realize almost five hundred thousand. We did not in two thousand and twenty-three. Staff confirmed that city council can request a pilot payment as part of the approval process. We had two recent developments that paid four hundred thousand dollars upfront. And while developers did offer a total of five hundred and fifty thousand over multiple years, staff actually recommended the upfront payment, because the annual payments take staff time to process and over time, the, the amount of money actually becomes less valuable. Whereas we get it upfront, it has a better impact on our current year budget. Over the past ten years, we know we've received almost one point five million dollars from six developments. And some are continuing to pay over time based on the approval that, that they got at the time. We are going to cut into 2022 and go to the next slide. That, that bottom number there is the 2022 number, if you're comparing the two slides. During budget presentation, city council discussed the importance of a diverse tax base. And we wanted to provide this slide to show property tax revenue based on land use. We had to do some extrapolation and some assumptions on this to make the, the developments equitable to each other. And what we find is those land uses that have higher property values, like commercial, obviously bring in more tax revenue. These higher tax, tax generators can actually result in lower tax rate citywide. So we need to invest in that balance of land uses for that funding balance. Next slide. Shifting gears, cost of service. And I'm gonna go really quick and we'll take questions at the end. But on the previous slide, we talked a little bit about property values and tax revenue in general terms. This slide is showing the actual market value for all land in San Marcos. And you can see that it grows over time, because property values increase and the city also increases in size. The tax-exempt properties, so talking about that twenty-eight percent of land that's fully tax-exempt, we discussed that earlier. That tax-exempt land is remaining about six percent of the overall taxable land in San Marcos. So we're kind of seeing that even though we're seeing more LIGHTC developments that are tax-exempt, we know that city's buying property, the university's buying property. As a percentage, it's staying at about six percent over year, every year. Next slide. The next two slides are showing graphic representation of the cost of calls for service for police and fire. The top line is the total expenditure for the department. And based on the total expenditure, we, we were able to estimate how much it costs for each call that the department responds to. When we look citywide, calls to LIGHTC developments are around seven percent of all calls to the cities. It's a fairly small percentage. We did expand the view a little bit to see if multifamily had more calls than, you know, other types of land uses. And we found that only about twenty-five percent of fire calls are to multifamily, LIGHTC and non-LIGHTC. And the other seventy-five percent of calls are for everything else. Let's switch to the next slide. This is the police version of that graphic, and everything else includes things like car accidents, responding to emergency calls if someone falls, the, the fire department may be going to that. Responding to alarms, when alarms go off at commercial businesses. And then, of course, for PD, all of the other crimes and things that they have to respond to. And you can see on the PD slide that approximately two percent of police calls are to LIGHTC projects, developments. And about fifteen percent is to multifamily overall, meaning that about eighty-five percent of PD calls are for those other things. There was a question on the message board about calls per population and staff didn't attempt to calculate that statistic, because we don't have population-specific data for multifamily developments. We also know that PD and FD respond to calls for service for those who don't live in San Marcos. So those calls to those who don't live here would fall into that seventy-five and eighty-five percent of other calls. Next slide. Maintenance is another service provided by the city, and this slide looks at just one aspect of maintenance. We're looking at road maintenance. The metrics we used to look at this cost for maintenance was based on about two hundred units. Warehousing is more dense, like in the multifamily example on the left side of the screen. The city is maintaining about three thousand linear feet of roadway. And as the density decreases, the linear feet And as the density decreases, the linear feet increases, and as such, the cost to repair increases. So this statistic can also be applied to other utilities. This is just one example that we provided for the presentation. But, in general, when you have larger spaces between users, between housing units, it's going to result in more linear feet of infrastructure that needs to be maintained. Infill that uses existing infrastructure and denser developments could have less of an impact on the city's overall maintenance budget, but the one thing we have to remember about infill is while the utilities and the infrastructure are there, they may also be older utilities and infrastructure, so it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison that we can do. We just know that density is less infrastructure, and that's how we get to. The numbers that are there for the major repairs, minor repairs. Minor repairs are a milling overlay where they just scrape off the tar and put some back on asphalt. I'm not in utilities, so I don't know exactly what they do, and then the major repairs that are listed on the screen is when they have to reconstruct the whole road. They're taking out the sidewalks, digging down, and pulling up the road base and all of that. Next slide. Finally, for cost of service, we pulled service data for the library and transit. The library is unique in that the population is assigned from the Texas State Library Archives and includes people in the county. The county also provides some funding for the library operation, so the numbers that you see there includes library funding and library, or county funding and county population. For transit, they rely heavily on grant funding, so the cost per ride can vary dramatically. On the slide, you can actually see that the cost to the city to provide transit service per ride in twenty twenty-one was zero dollars because we got a lot of grants. This year, if someone gets on the bus, just the regular bus, the fixed route service, it's costing us about four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Next slide. This is a very, very quick summary of what I presented so far. Lightsea makes up less than one percent of all tax-exempt property, and at full build-out, Lightsea residents may make up about ten percent of city population. Lightsea developments account for about one to seven percent of all calls for emergency services. And unfortunately, it's not easy to derive a cost-per-person number that can be applied across the board. We had talked about how much does it cost us to serve one particular person in San Marcos or one particular, you know, housing unit in San Marcos, and the numbers just aren't that easy to create. And, for example, the library and transit, those are great examples of varying populations for each of the service areas. Our water and wastewater are servicing our ETJ population, so it's hard to really get that per-person in San Marcos number for cost of services. But we can make some assumptions based on the road maintenance example that density could result in lower infrastructure maintenance costs. And overall, what staff found as we were doing the research is that cost of service is a very complicated topic. Next slide. All right. City Council asked for some information on comparison cities, so, next slide. Staff reached out to cities that we used to compare during budget process, and we received information back from the communities that are here on the screen. What we found is there's actually not a good comparison city to San Marcos. Of those that responded, we actually have the highest number of approved developments. We also have the highest poverty rate. We are one of the few communities, though, that has adopted a policy. Responding to a message board question, I added the median income for the communities, and we have the lowest median income as well. And there are a variety of factors that go into that, so as you start to look across the board, we do compare closest to Brian, which could be a result of the college student population. Next slide. All right. Staff researched the TDHCA to better understand their policies and practices. What we found is that when a developer submits a Lightsea application, they have to sign off on a lot of disclosures. Most are related to location. They want to make sure that these developments are in a desirable location for those residents that will ultimately live there. The second to the last bullet has the saturation acknowledgements. They are something that City Council sees fairly regularly. In order for the resolution to be accepted by TDHCA, they want to ensure that we know we have a high number of Lightsea developments. And specifically, in the one-mile-three-year rule, that we know we are approving multiple developments in a location that's within a mile of a previous development. So as we have seen kind of on the south and east side, we'll have another slide on that, we've approved quite a few Lightsea developments down in that area. Next slide. Council had some questions on the requirements for service, and staff found out that a development must commit to operate an after-school learning center at least fifteen hours a week. And this is due to the TEA accountability rating for school districts. So because our school districts have a certain rating, that standard is required. So when you see the Lightsea developments on your agenda for approval, they will not check that box because they have to do it anyways. Same with transportation. They will not check the box for transportation. If they are not on a transit line, they have to provide it. So they have to provide a shuttle service a certain number of days, certain hours during the day, to get people to and from, medical, groceries, and the other things that they may need to get to. Now, if a transit line comes in, has a stop near the development, they can stop that service because now there's a public transportation service that the residents can take advantage of. There are resident support services that have to be at no cost to the resident, and they have to meet the Texas Administrative Code. So TDHCA policies are actually rules that are found in the TAC, which I didn't have on my first slide, but I may say it again, the Texas Administrative Code. They have to also have sufficient common amenities to meet the TAC, and those are the barbecue grills and, you know, pool tables, things that people can have there for amenity purposes. The TAC requires that five percent of units are for mobility-impaired, the ADA units. In addition, they have to have two percent of units for hearing and visually impaired, so they actually go above and beyond just basic ADA and have a separate set of units. They have to, for the TDHCA application, include their site plan, architectural drawings, costs, show the bedroom counts, and all of that, which is why by the time they get to us for their resolution, we have pretty detailed documentation about what they want to do because they've spent a lot of time getting ready for that TDHCA application. They provide the state very detailed financial information, and they cannot be student housing. If you are a mom and a dad with a child, or a mom with a child, or a dad with a child, your student can live there. But a college student, who is a full-time student, wouldn't be able to rent one of these units in a Lightsea development because they are a full-time student. Next slide. TDHCA gives developers three options for their unit mix, and it's by income. San Marcos is a little bit more strict because we ask for a certain percentage of units at thirty percent or less AMI, so that's for the lowest income levels, when a property is tax-exempt. So we are a little bit more restricted if they want to be tax-exempt. But otherwise, the unit counts that we have in our resolution are for informational purposes. We'll have an item on the agenda this evening that we will talk a little bit about that. And having that resolution from the city gives the developer a boost in the scoring matrix that the state uses. Next slide. TDHCA has a process. Can we go back one slide? Am I missing a slide? Okay, well, I am going to read through this one, and we'll just talk about it briefly. TDHCA has a process for monitoring developments, and it is in your packet on page thirty-nine if you have it open on your screen, and it's outlined again in the Texas Administrative Code. There's compliance monitoring that occurs at least once every three years, and it starts on the second calendar year after the development opens. So TDHCA wants to make sure that the development is fully open, they've operated for a year, and then they come out and start there every three years. Monitoring includes inspection of the interior and exterior buildings, inspection of the amenities that are provided, and a review of the tenant and development records and files. So they're looking at the people that are living there to make sure they meet the income requirements and checking the files. They actually keep track of age, race, family composition, and all of that. And then annually, in addition to the every three years, annually, the owner has to certify that they are in compliance with the program requirements, they're meeting the LoRa, they also have to provide the tenant information, and report also for those who have disabilities to make sure that those units are staying full. And any non-compliance is reported to the IRS. So they are in this annual compliance report responding to questions that come from the federal government, and if they are not meeting those requirements, they are given some time to correct the issue. But whether or not they correct the issue, it does get reported to IRS, so that is tracked.
Does it ever get reported to us?
No, we haven't.
Yeah, we'll talk about that at the end.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. I know there are going to be questions about that at the end. Okay, I included this table just so we have it if we need it for discussion, but we will go to the next slide. To better understand the non-city aspects of Lightsea, we wanted to reach out to some external stakeholders. We met with representatives from the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation, the San Marcos Housing Authority, and a representative from the development community. Next slide. One more, please. Not from that external group, but we did receive data from the San Marcos Consolidated Independent School District, and when we reviewed the ISD data, staff noticed something, and that is, on this map, all of those blue triangles. That there seems to be a concentration of residential, not just Lightsea developments, but also single-family occurring on the south and east sides of town. The ISD data indicated that on average, multifamily units produce about point one-six students per unit, and single-family produces about point four-eight students per unit. So what we have derived from that is that the school district will actually expect to see higher enrollment as we approve more single-family development than multifamily development. But looking at this slide and kind of going back to some of the other talking points, we may need some location requirements now that we're starting to see this concentration on the south and east side. Next slide. Through interviews with the external stakeholder group, we heard some of what council has already heard, as we've discussed Lightsea requests. We need housing for those that are at the lowest incomes. We need one- and two-bedroom units because the housing authority has a waitlist, and they've had to close their waitlist for one- and two-bedroom units because there are so many out there that need that size of home. One challenge that developers told us they face is that a range of incomes are needed to fund the construction costs. So as we request that they increase the number of lower AMI units, it makes it harder for them to fund the construction. They need a mix of units to be able to make the numbers work. And other challenges that they presented to us were that the agreements that are negotiated outside of the city process are very complicated, and balancing the city process with the state's timeline is actually very difficult for them because they overlap at various times during this process, and we just have to work very closely with our Lightsea developers to make sure we help them through our process to meet the state timeline. Next slide. This is a staff summary of the conversation held with the stakeholder group. Again, we met with the Housing Authority, the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation, and a representative from the development community. What I didn't know, that I found out in the first bullet there, is that the agencies actually work really closely with the developers and fully vet those developers. I always thought that if a developer came to them, they said, "Okay, let's sign an agreement and move forward with this." They actually go through all of their financials and really go through a hard process to come to that agreement because they're going to be in that agreement for up to thirty years, and they want to make sure that they have a good working partner to move forward with. The San Marcos Housing Authority gives preference to residents of Hays County, but I will note that that is for the properties that they manage. The properties that they partner with do not have that same benefit of preference to residents of Hays County. Wraparound services can't change without state approval and can never drop below the required points. They can change, however. If the state monitors the development or the annual report from the developer says, "Hey, no one is coming to this program that we're providing every single week," they can look for another program that the state says they can offer and swap those out so long as the points remain the same. Found out that developers use leasing agents and compliance consultants. So when they're doing that annual compliance report, there's a consultant who specifically knows all of the rules and everything that they need to answer to be able to fill out that compliance report. And if they are found to be not in compliance, they don't remedy the issue, it gets reported to the feds, they could lose their tax credit certification. We heard from the development community that the three-bedroom unit requirement in our city policy seems arbitrary, and it doesn't actually align with the needs. So one of the most recent developments that y'all saw, they were requesting not to provide the number of three-bedroom units that our policy requires, and council approved that. So I think that's something we probably need to look at now that we're hearing that the need at the housing authority level is for smaller units, that maybe we need to finesse that number a little bit. And then also that commercial tax base obviously helps support tax-exempt housing, so that's something I kind of referenced in that slide with the different developments and the tax revenues, that we have to find that balance if we're going to continue to approve tax-exempt housing. We need the balance of those taxpayers at the higher end, the commercial, the industrial, and the mixed use to be able to balance our books and make our numbers work. Next slide. Our last bit is a recap, some considerations for City Council, next steps, and direction. Recapping, we know the city's growing. We know we need housing. We know we need jobs. We know we have to provide services to all developments in San Marcos, not only Lightsea. We provide that cost-of-service slide is for everybody. Everybody can take advantage or needs those services from the city. We do see there's a concentration of Lightsea and other housing developments on the south and east side, and while that is in the direction of our comprehensive plan, we also need to consider if there are location requirements that we need to put into our policy. Comparison cities mostly do not have policies. However, San Marcos, even though we have a policy, has the most Lightsea development compared to other cities who responded. So we need to make sure that our policy is sound as those developments come in, that we're able to work with the developers and let them know what we want when it comes to this type of housing. We know that TDHCA compliance is required. We heard from the external stakeholder group that they take compliance very seriously. They don't want to lose that tax credit that they get from the state. And we also heard that partnerships between developers and public agencies are very complicated, and they're very long-term relationships that they all take very seriously. Next slide. Info snack. You saw this already, but again, for the long-term viability of the city, it's imperative that we have a diverse tax base. When we have tax-exempt developments, and not just Lightsea, but also, again, the city buys land and the university and others buy land, we need to have those other uses that offset the tax burden to others who live in our community. Next slide. And last but not least, there are some considerations for City Council. I mentioned that in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we did the housing needs assessment to prepare the Strategic Housing Action Plan. And one of the things that the housing needs assessment said that the city of San Marcos needs is housing for those making less than twenty-five thousand a year. It said at the time that we needed thirty-one thousand, almost thirty-two thousand, non-student renter... We were going to have, I'm gonna say this wrong, I'm sorry. We're going to have thirty-one thousand nine hundred non-student renter households that would be Lightsea eligible.
Thirty-one thousand?
Thirty... See, I told you I was gonna say it wrong. I'm at the point where I'm not reading correctly. Thirty-two hundred. Let's say thirty-two hundred and not thousand. Thirty-two hundred, non-student renter households. We have approved, in the timeframe that this was done to today, almost three thousand Lightsea units. So what we need to do with that housing needs assessment is see if that number of units that we need and people that we think are moving to San Marcos has changed and how we have started to fill that gap with those developments that we have approved over the last four or five years. They also, in the needs assessment, stated we need housing priced at or near or below two hundred thousand. We know that we don't see that in San Marcos anymore, so we also need to reassess that data and see if that number has changed. And then the housing needs assessment finally said that we need increased variety in housing types available. And what we actually found is we were putting this slide together and pulling from our Vision SMTX Comprehensive Plan and Preferred Scenario that were just approved in October, the comprehensive plan says the same thing. We need more diverse housing units and more variety of housing units, not just single-family, not just apartments. We need other places for people to live. We also need thoughtful growth, that fifteen-minute neighborhood, the fact that, the idea that people can get to and from grocery, work, school within fifteen minutes is important. And as we saw, the job density is on the west side of San Marcos, but the new housing density is happening on the east side of San Marcos, so we need to look at how to make that balance. And then the comprehensive plan obviously said to update and adopt the Housing Action Plan, so that is on our radar to start working on soon. Next slide. I will conclude that Lightsea is a complicated topic. This presentation was intended to provide data that was requested by City Council as well as provide that data and information that we found while we were doing the research because we thought it was really valuable. No major decisions are being made this evening, this afternoon, and staff is really seeking direction from City Council to make sure we are on the right track for our next steps. Using the data and info in this presentation and viewing everything with an equity lens, we would like to meet with the Workforce Housing Committee, which is Council members Scott Gonzalez and Mendoza, and talk about the policy in fine detail. We think we need to talk about the location, we need to talk about our criteria for approval, and also we need to start having the conversation about pilot. I think the council was clear, we want to probably require it. What does that look like? How do we calculate? How do we calculate it? And where do we use that funding once we receive it? We would also like to, and we are currently working through Neighborhood Area Plans, so starting to incorporate more of the Lightsea conversation in those area plans. Is there room in the neighborhoods for infill development? Or are they going to be on the outskirts of town? And finally, as we saw in the consideration slides, we've added, we think, almost the recommended number of units in the last five years. So we really need to update the data in the Strategic Housing Action Plan, get that back in front of council, but also get it back out in front of the community. It was a really community-driven process, so we want to make sure that we go through that process again. So I want to, again, thank everybody who was part of this presentation. I hope they're watching and they were proud. And that will conclude my presentation.
First, thanks to you and everyone. There is information in here that I'm going to file in different places. For example, the- the street maintenance. This is- this is great. And a lot of the advantages are just the fact that it's compact. It's apartments, all the Lightsea are in apartments. Just, I think you made a notation, but the waitlist that Ms. Hernandez mentioned is for the Housing Authority only. We don't know about the other- about the other Lightsea projects. I'm glad to see that we're talking about a complete rewrite. And I would suggest sometimes it's better to just start over from scratch instead of trying to amend and trying to make those square pegs fit in the round holes. So whatever y'all do on that is great. And I would encourage y'all to look- look at everything. Which I hope is a pilot that they're required to pay every year. And I didn't know that we had some that were doing that, but I think that's a good idea. One of the main concerns that I had when I started looking at some of these things, you recall that we had the discussion about these projects that were not paying property tax? Then, when I got to looking, that some of these are owned by the Housing Authority, but yet the Housing Authority practices are not being- not being followed in there. The Housing Authority owns it, but yet other people are running it, which means that Hays County preference, remind me if I'm wrong, that Hays County preference is not happening. And that concerns me. That- that really concerns me. So that was- that was a big concern that I had. I'm- I'm also concerned about some of the things that the Housing Authority does, the budgeting classes, some of those other things for when you move out. I think that that's- that may be enough of a requirement for the LITAC or Lightsea projects. So that may not be as much concern, but that Hays County preference, that's bothering me. Does that bother anybody else?
Yeah, I think- I think in general, I have some concerns over, like, the- what you discussed briefly, or you touched on, like, the Housing Authority and what its practices are now. And our understanding, our awareness of that and how that impacts everything.
But it was mainly, is everybody concerned as a Hays County preference for the residents?
The concern of everybody? Or just me?
If it's not being followed, yes. But I know, I went back and watched the July meeting that was the subject of every- all your work, which thank you for the work and everyone for the work. Um, I know on the- the Housing Authority, one of the questions that was asked, so, can that preferential, without violating the Fair Housing Act, can that preferential San Marcos selection exist for the Lightsea projects as well? Or is that something to do with the way the Housing Authority gets their funding that makes it possible with them?
So I don't know exactly how it's correlated with the Housing Authority. I just know that they have it. Can it apply to Lightsea? I don't know. If there was a partnership with the Housing Authority, I would think that the agreement that they come to may be able to include that language in that agreement between the developer and the Housing Authority. Could it apply to general Lightsea developments that are not associated with the Housing Authority? I would venture to say that that would be going out on a limb, and we would be in that-
Yeah.
That territory that Sam put us in earlier with the previous discussion, is that I don't know what ability we would have to require that because they are- TDHCA is a pass-through funding source, so it's funding that's coming from HUD through TDHCA for the state of Texas. So we might have some-
The Housing Authority, that's HUD also. And so I would hope that maybe TDHCA could see the value of local preference. Again, never suggesting anybody violate the Fair Housing laws, but that that local preference be part of what they impose, so we don't have to.
Yeah.
So, but tha- that's something. But I think something that we might be able to do is say if the Housing Authority owns it, then those practices need to be followed. They are at least the ones that- that make sense. Like, don't duplicate the budgeting, you know, classes or whatever. So that's something that I would like to put out there, and I think- I think we're all interested in that, is just say, "Okay, if you're gonna be owned by the Housing Authority, you have to at least do X, Y, Z." Or the Housing Authority would make that requirement. So that was- that was the huge one for me. And then y'all are gonna look at pilot perhaps every year because it is payment in lieu of taxes. So what else do we have? I've got this list. Are- are we all good with the Housing Committee to review the policy, our requirements compared to what TDHCA requires? And the pilot, are we good with having them look at that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Garza, you good with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and, okay, so, we are- we are there. The other items, my question was neighborhood plans, strategic housing, equity lands. Is, well, yeah, why is that even a question?
Let's do it.
Um, yeah.
We're gonna do it anyways.
They're underway, yeah.
Let's just, let's just do it.
Yeah, just to put that out there, that these are tied in with the conversation, that we're- we're working on these. If we're not, they're coming up on the radar, so we will continue to move forward. I guess unless you told us not to, we would stop.
Not me.
No, no.
Nope.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the waitlist, the Housing Authority waitlist, were y'all able to determine, and I imagine it fluctuates, but were y'all able to determine, like, a medium age range? An average age range?
We didn't ask those questions. The information that we received came from, one, a letter to city council at a meeting, and then I had a follow-up conversation, and they just repeated that there is a waitlist. I did not inquire about the details of who's on the waitlist.
Right, I think this is related to all of this, but I think it would be very helpful if staff could go assess just how all that process works. I know we, and I was very frustrated with the process, with the recent voucher. Yeah, chaotic stuff. I think I revealed that the- there's something going on, like, they either don't have capacity to understand how to thoughtfully engage with our neighbors and, like, distribute information, but beyond that, like, lack of organization. But also, lack of awareness, even on our end, like, whose lane is what? How do we- how do we show up best as partners with them when we are kind of a little bit confused as to everybody's responsibility?
About that specific Housing Authority process?
Yeah, yeah. Because to your point about the equity lens, I think I emailed a PDF about these- these type of projects and, like, different suggestions and how to, like, root it in more equity. But they recommended things like working with the Housing Authorities. But I know Casar's office is also willing to have that conversation. They had some staff out on leave, but they've returned.
I actually did reach out. I got an email from him, the staff, this morning.
Amanda?
Yeah.
Or the chief. So her name's also Amanda, and she'd be, I think, the one that has, like, the best information.
Uh, well, the young lady, the one- I'm- I'm- I used to work with a young lady that's her head office in Austin. But I did get an email this morning, link, find it for you, asking me to please get with them.
Oh, I'm sorry, her name's Claire. I get them all confused, her name's Claire.
Amanda's a good name, though.
That's my little sister's name.
Hang on, I've got- I've got one more question to ask when y'all are through with that.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to throw that out there, too.
Okay, also, something that- that I- I had asked staff to determine, and they've been trying, and folks aren't getting back with us, is to see what the compliance looks like at TDHCA end. Whenever they're looking to see if people are in compliance, I'd like to see those reports. Apparently, they're not on the website, and I don't know why they're not. Perhaps we could do some legislation lobbying.
And they did actually reply to my email, but really just to share the same exact information that I had pulled from the administrative code. They- they sort of reiterated and sent me links to the code, so. Haven't been able to get really good information on that.
But I would like to, and if what we have to do is do an open records request, because they are a state agency, is to get those reports for each one of the- each one of the properties that are the low-income, regardless of Housing Authority or not. So open record report to get that, maybe the last three years' worth. And then, if there's any changes that they're making, because I know our Housing- Council Housing Committee is very thoughtful when they're going through the list of requirements and looking at, you know, what we need in San Marcos. I get sometimes something doesn't work, and they- and they can't just drop it, they have traded down something else, most likely. I would like to see what those changes are, and if it's the same thing over and over again, then maybe we need to quit asking people to do something that everybody's just changing once they get there. So I would like to see us get a copy of whatever changes. That's only gonna be every two years?
Three.
Every three years? So whatever those are, I think we're all interested in seeing that. Perhaps those could be obtained and then put on the message board or somewhere for us. So is that something y'all are interested in?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I think that's- they're trying to get that done for months. Okay, yes, ma'am.
No, I was just gonna say, that's a great idea. I had concerns, I mean, we've never really heard, like, how the compliance thing works. And I know lots of folks who live in these apartments and stuff, and I don't know, who's going around and doing these checks, but-
I've been hearing some stuff.
Yeah, that, and also during the pandemic, these developments had special parameters when it came to, like, evictions, for example. Like, even after we got rid of our- what was it, moratorium? And nobody running these shows were empowering our neighbors with that awareness to where, like, JPs were calling us and being like, "Oh, somebody showed up and they had this printout from the internet that said that they get more time." Like, so clearly, somebody's dropping the ball, like, doing intentional outreach to meet the needs of our neighbors. So, thank you, ma'am.
Anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
I think Saul had one first.
Okay.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. I believe you mentioned that the Housing Authority had four apartment complexes? Or places that they rent, like CML and Homes, Allen Homes? Did they have more than that?
Oh, I- I'm not aware of all the properties that they own.
Okay. Where I'm going with this is about twenty years back, and Councilman Scott might remember this, that they built several homes in San Marcos, and the intent was for those people to rent it for five years, and then they get to buy that home. That hasn't happened.
And that was the Housing Authority?
That was the Housing Authority, yeah.
And I- I just wondered what happened to that? That was such a good- it would've been a good program.
Yeah, I never heard anything about that one.
And the reason we know about it is because we're within the two-hundred feet of notification, and they send us a letter and all that good stuff.
Okay, got it.
Okay. And another one is, what I'm hearing is now that all the apartments are getting rented, there's several vacant apartments that are just sitting there. I- I just wondered, with all this money that they're getting.
Well, what I've- what I've heard on some of that is sometimes, I think it's maybe the four-bedroom, that are, sometimes will have one of those empty, but they may have a two-year waiting list on the one- and two-bedroom. So the waiting list is not always for every level.
Correct, and we pull multifamily statistics annually for the department's annual report. We find that about ninety-two to ninety-four percent is the level of occupancy for all multifamily. So we know that there are going to be some vacant apartments within every complex in San Marcos, and that would include these developments. And that partially has to do with income requirements and, you know, all of that. They can't accept just anybody, they have to go through the process.
Right.
Okay, so let me go around the table. Are y'all interested in finding information about this five-year housing?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think, and on the waitlist and stuff like that.
One other thing was, one of the residents actually took me by the apartment complex and was showing me things that are not getting fixed. And they had cameras everywhere, which all of them were facing the ground, or facing the sky, or some were not even working. Their safety also is- is a concern of mine. If you're gonna have them, use them.
Yes, and I think some of this actually ties in. I'm glad we had the two presentations at today's work session. But as we're getting into any safety concerns, those types of questions that are coming maybe to council or to staff, we can route them through that same process with code compliance. It doesn't necessarily have to be tied to the fact that they're Lightsea developments. This is all multifamily that we're talking about. This is all housing that we're talking about in the prior presentation. And really, this one borders that line, too. But yes, if there are safety concerns, let's use that same process that we're using.
So we're looking for information, we're going to Housing Authority. One of my questions, what are the rules as far as waitlists and that kind of thing? Because the Section Eight, that was the first time they'd opened the waitlist in, what, six years or something? Had two-hundred people on it, when they got down to thirty. On the waitlist is when they opened it up again. Just information about those practices and also what their waitlist stats are for the last three years?
Yeah, cuz I'm really interested in age. I mean, specifically, especially since we do 55-plus Litese developments. And I mean, I, the reason I asked about age is we know more people are living on fixed incomes. So do we need to adjust how many of those we we make based off of, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
And then and then that'll go to the committee that will work over the list.
And if I can clarify.
If there are some specific questions for the San Marcos Housing Authority, I'm wondering if it might be worth just having Lana come to a work session so that there could be those questions, you know, just because.
I I'd like to see the questions and answers first and then bring her in.
We can we can do that. I think it's just a matter of, I think that you'll get your questions more fully answered and because it's gonna spur other things that y'all are gonna think of. And so just having that dialogue might be helpful, so.
That would be great, but I I don't want her to be here. We're just asking questions.
Yeah.
Get the questions out there, let her answer them, and then we'll ask for clarifications and things.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for the the waitlist, the vacancies, like Amanda said, and the demographics. And also like what what is like the most need? Is it like the the two-bedroom, three-bedroom, you know what I mean? But yeah, cuz the concern is with vacancies and stuff is that, and this also happened in our conversation with the vouchers, is that there's like a lack of case management. And so like, is there a thing where it's like, because there's no capacity to do outreach to fill some of the vacancies? It's not that there's not a need, it's that, and this is like for the other projects. It's that they have interesting operation systems internally.
Okay. We've got everything out. Mr. Ventali, did you have something? No, okay.
I just had one thing, more of a question. I was wondering if we could add as far as direction. You know, with the upcoming legislative session, we only have that every two years. So I was wondering, I mean, it's been a continual conversation around AMI, how it does not reflect the population that we serve. And I know it was mentioned earlier in the public comment portion about could perhaps, you know, our lobbying or legislative committee work on something that's, you know, related to this issue and bringing it to the attention of of our legislators? Just because, I mean, it only happens every two years and we're about to hit one of them, so.
Well, that's why when they say 50, we say 30.
But still, you know, really codifying that and letting people know.
Somewhat, but yes, let's talk about that. What changes we might need to make and what we've got.
And the legislative agenda will be coming to the full council, so that can be, that that is something. But if there's direction to staff now to add that, then that's something that could be done or to have the legislative committee discuss that.
Uh, I think that'd be a good thing for the legislative committee to look at. And and you're right, it's coming up and we don't have a lot of time to.
And it's gonna be a tough session, we know, with like preemption and stuff. But I think, you know, at least doing our part to let, you know, people know that this is impeding our ability to give people housing based on their actual needs.
Y'all y'all good with legislative committees starting that and then bringing it to council?
Yeah.
Okay. We good on all this?
Can I offer one point of clarification?
Please.
Would it be possible to go to my slide number six, which is the policy history? I wanted to make sure that for the new council member, I mentioned in 2017, we added Litese criteria for 55-plus. In 2018, we opened it to all ages. So we we now look at and have criteria for all Litese for all demographics. So I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that we that we're not limited to the 55-plus currently. We do see a lot of it, but we do have the ability for those who are not senior housing to come in and ask for this resolution.
And that's a matter of a decision that the developers have made when they come to us.
Right.
Are we good on this one?
That's all. I have my marching orders. I appreciate everybody.
All right, then that will close out item one and we've already completed item two. So now we need to go into executive session. Ms. Cordova.
The city council will convene an executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to receive legal legal advice regarding contracts with the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority concerning water treatment, management, and distribution for the city.
Looking for a motion?
So moved second.
Uh, I will give that to Mr. Scott and seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Let's vote. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Are we present muddied? Ms. Garza?
We're freestyling. Aye.
Mayor Huesa?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Gleason? Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
All right, we will go into executive session at 5:17. Council, if you would. Turn from executive session, which we finished at 5:46. It is now time for a question and answer. And we have one person who's signed up, which is Mr. Baker. He joins us in person.
Hi, yes. Again, super duper thrilled with the presentation you all gave at the three o'clock meeting. I encourage anybody who has, you know, housing stuff. I know we have a lot of people here for another issue, so I just wanted to repeat how neat that session was so that they tune into that. My question's for you all, and I appreciate Councilmember Rodriguez bringing it forward of, you know, sending this to the legislative committee. I heard that you all planned to do that, so thank you so much. You know, so I I guess my biggest question is historically, some of the feedback you're gonna get in that research portion is going to suggest we abut against some law at the state or federal level. Will you all commit to sharing that clearly with the community so that in addition to your lobbying efforts, we as a community can organize and help push back against those things as well? Because we know that for you all, to spend your political capital being argumentative or combative, as it might be appeared, with the state or federal legislatures and those representatives, it is different when it comes from the community. So just a quick yes or no, I see thumbs up and stuff. Would you all commit to, again, just sharing the exact laws and regulations that are barring us from making some of the changes the community has asked for?
I'm gonna give you what we got. I can't, don't know that I can promise that level of detail, but I'm 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 going where you're going, I think.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you all so much. Again, really great workshop. Really loved all the research, thanks staff, everybody else. Good. Gold stars.
Thank you. And we will adjourn. There being no further business, we are adjourned at 5:50.